It should be on, is it not on?
Well, I don't know how I'm supposed to go anywhere.
Did everybody get one?
I was supposed to get this back to Mark. I'm not sure. Where is he? No. Yes, he's up. Has anybody talked to Jack? I know. It's up to you. Has anyone spoken with Jack? Okay. He'll probably be here.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are obviously without a form right at the moment, so we're going to hold tight until somebody, I know you're number four, or you're number one, I don't know where to start counting. But that's what the holdup is, just so you're aware. Thank you. Gentlemen, miracles do happen, believe it or not. We have a quorum. And I'm calling this meeting to order. It is now 1:06. So we're going to proceed with business. Mrs. Campisi, will you call the roll, please? Here.
Present.
Present.
Here.
We have a quorum, correct? Thank you very much. Mr. Johnson, would you please lead us in our pledge? Let's go to item one, which is the discussion and approval of the minutes. Anyone have any comments? They've been posted. This meeting was posted properly at noon last Friday, September 29th.
Motion to approve minutes.
Have a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Please vote electronically on the motion to approve the minutes. Mrs. Campisi, will you call the roll as well? Yes.
Yes.
Yes. I brought the wrong items. Great Scott. All right, we have the claims as item number two, claims and...
Motion to approve claims.
Thank you very much. Is there a second for approving claims?
Second.
Thank you very much. Vote electronically on the motion to approve the claims, item number two. Mrs. Campisi, please call the roll. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you very much. Let's go on to item three. Mrs. Garner, it's your report. I know you have a full report. Please take the podium and let us know.
Okay, is that better?
Thank you, Jeff, for trying.
So I apologize for the format of this. It was a really large presentation, so it's a PDF that I'm going to have to kind of scroll through. You all should have the handouts for that. There we go. These are just a few of the things that I'm going to cover in my report. We're going to talk about our statistics, training, the pod renovations, our new phone, the telecommunications provider, and a tour that we did with the committee for the, sorry, with the committee for the new facility. So, good news, we are at 268 current employees. 136 of them are now detention-trained. This time last month, it was about 122. So our plan to move forward is working. We have more people that are certified to work along our population, and that's the direction that we're going to continue to head. Our current applicant status, we do have five that are in background. We have 23 that will be entering the background process. We have two interviews pending, and three have completed all of the hiring requirements, but they couldn't start with this academy that's starting today. As you can see, our next academy did start today. We had 23 total. That's actually one new, did not report. One was just late. Five of them are current employees, and they are training to transition into the detention support officer position that we created. Current population, our head count is 1,507, compared to this time last year was 1,572. There's a breakdown of the male and female, the genders, obviously you can see that on the report. I want to focus on the top five arresting agencies for the month. Oklahoma City Police Department arrested 1,187 people. For about 67% of all of our new intakes were from Oklahoma City. And then it's followed by the Sheriff's Office, Edmund PD, OHP, and Midwest City Police Department. There's current breakdown by current population, the age. The majority of the people that are in our custody are 30 to 39, followed by 18 to 29. Our daily head count continues to trend downward. For September of 2023, the average was 1,514. The average length of stay for people that were booked in on September were 6.35, and the average daily number of people that were booked in was about 62. This is just our special housing report. Our DOC number continues to trend downward. I think right now we are at 162, which is a decrease from the 200 to 10 that we have been at. So I know that several of you are working on that, and I appreciate the help. Some of the other numbers, mental health observation, it appears to be trending downward. The people that are claiming to be suicidal when they are brought into custody are also trending downward. Our overall population trend, this is taken from the C-Jack dashboard. They use our information to compile the data. You can tell that from the beginning of the trust, since July 2020, we continue to trend downward. We do have a few peaks here and there, but that's expected during some of the summer months. 129.6 days is the average number of days that somebody is detained in custody. I want to talk about our training, because this is probably one of the most exciting things we have going on right now. Today, we did start the new academy, and this is revamped and revised from previous academies, which lasted about two weeks. All of these changes are still well underway. It'll be four weeks long, and we are expanding the duration of the academy to allow for more repetition repetition of perishable skills such as defensive tactics and handcuffing to better prepare our new officers for this environment. We're looking forward to this academy also incorporating more hands-on training versus presentation-style training. The classes are now taught by our subject matter experts within the jail and utilizing our resources to bring in experts for training in topics such as mental health, legal liability, and diversion resources. All the new employees, regardless of their position, will be required to go through the academy so they can assist with critical tasks and caring for our population. On-the-job training will also be expanded from two weeks to six weeks, and they will rotate through a variety of roles and shifts to gain a big-picture perspective of the jail operations. Increasing length of time for this also allows for better preparation, mentorship, and evaluation of suitability for positions. The training room in the basement will continue to undergo minor cosmetic updates and equipment purchases. By having training onsite, it enables current staff to build relationships with new employees earlier on, provides hands-on opportunities, and a realistic job preview, which research has shown increases retention and overall job satisfaction. Moving forward, all in-service training will be able to be held in our new training room, and we're looking forward to incorporating weekly opportunities to keep perishable skills like defensive tactics fresh. All of our new hires will enter employment through one of two paths. They'll either be a detention officer or a detention support officer. The main thing that distinguishes them is a detention officer, their primary responsibility is to work alongside our inmate population. The detention support officers are going to fill roles that were previously filled by civilians, such as a clerk, but they will also be expected to help with things like site checks, inmate movement, meals, and medication pass. We've also been able to get some of our staff through a number of trainings this month. Some of our staff attended the Oklahoma Gang Investigators Conference last week. This was important for them to be aware of emerging issues and trends, and identifying the conveyance of contraband. And of course, networking is always a valuable thing for us, so we can have resources when the need arises. We also had several staff members receive OLETT certification last week, and two were certified as trainers, so now we can continue to do this in-house. If you're unfamiliar, OLETT is Oklahoma Law Enforcement Telecommunication System. It's a computer network that connects public safety agencies across the state to criminal histories, driver records, and other various local, state, and federal databases. OLETT certification is important to our release process, as it allows us to check the warrants and warrants of an individual due to be released. And this also allows our investigators to conduct background checks for our new hires, volunteers, and others who request access to the facility. Also this week, we are sending multiple staff members to a variety of classes that are offered by the Oklahoma Sheriff's Association Conference. Some of the training that is covered during the conference includes legal updates, contraband detection, leadership, detox and suicide prevention in jails, bail procedures, and law. We're just going to continue looking for opportunities like this that are low cost and to get our staff through some training. Next, I want to talk about the pod renovations. The first pod is completed, and it is ready to accept individuals in our care for housing. The process of this renovation, it started with our maintenance team going in and making the necessary repairs. Most of it was due to damage by our population. Once, this pod is one of the worst that was in our facility. We had to do some intensive cleaning and do some molded abatement before we were able to even look at doing any other renovations. So that took about two weeks. The estimated initial cost for this was $3,188, and a lot of that was just in equipment purchases that we can reuse should the need arise. Moving forward, the expected cost per pod is about $1,162, and we're also looking at the possibility of bringing in contractors just to save time and money and to expedite the renovation of the cells. The future pods are estimated to take approximately two weeks, and we did utilize the assistance of SHINE program participants to come in and help do some of the prep work, like taping and masking off some of the areas. Moving forward, this week, we do intend to shut down an entire floor of the jail, and we are going to begin prepares and renovations on that floor. The consolidation is possible due to help from the court system and proactive population management. And the consolidation, of course, is going to account for all of our classifications and different keep separates. It's going to be challenging, but I think it's necessary, and not only does shutting this floor down allow us to make these renovations, but it frees up some of our staff, because some of our, you know, we have one officer maybe working a floor that has pods that are a quarter full or half-full, so it just makes sense to consolidate. As a reminder, the benefit of these renovations include working towards compliance with the State Health Department, their jail standards. It improves the cleanliness of the cells. It increases the foot candle requirement cited by the Health Department. It seals the concrete to decrease ability of bedbugs and other pests to nest within the walls. It's easier to see into the cells during site checks, particularly at night, to improve the quality of those site checks, including identifying new damage or graffiti more readily. It also enables our officers to have a fresh start, so they can actually hold the detainees accountable for the damages and the graffiti that they're doing to the walls. It improves the health and well-being of our population, and it also improves the working environment for our staff. On September 19th, we visited Wichita County Detention Center in Wichita Falls, Texas. This facility was designed by HOK, which has also been selected by the county to build and design our new facility. This facility was built two years ago, and it was designed as a direct supervision model. It's a single-story with ample space for outdoor recreation, programs within the pod, and even washroom and dryers within each unit. The design and operation of the facility allows for efficiencies we do not currently have, including decreasing the amount of movement necessary to perform the basic functions of a jail. It has an open booking area with holding cells along the perimeter. Officers in that facility working in the intake area have minimal line-of-sight issues, so they can observe all areas of the receiving. It is also designed so detainees of different statuses do not utilize the same pass. This is in stark contrast to our current facility, which has multiple issues with line of sight and traffic flow. The staff that went on the jail tour with us came back with new ideas and a better understanding of how a modern facility is operated, and this is important for us to begin preparations to operate a new facility once it is built. In the coming months, we will also be sending additional staff, as we have an open invite from the sheriff and the jail administrator from Wichita Falls to have them come in and observe their operations. Next, I want to talk about our new inmate. There's just going to be a lot to cover. Our new inmate telecommunications system, we have opted to go with NCIC, and we have some of the representatives, as I understand, even the owner is here. Just want to talk about the benefits of this system and what we can expect moving forward. We are still in implementation phase. They have phones, are all connected right now. They're still working on all of the tablet connectivity and the kiosks. The goal is that we're going to start with two-to-one ratio for the tablets, so that's essentially one tablet per cell, which is a great improvement from what we had previously. If you would go into a pod before, they may have eight tablets for the entire pod, and it became an issue with access to having that resource available. The tablets hopefully will get to a ratio of one-to-one, so each person will have their own tablet, and it's a mirror image of the kiosk itself. They can do video visits on these tablets, and it's not required to put them on the wall like the previous systems, so they can actually do video visitation from their cell. It has facial recognition, so if they were to try to show something that is against the rules, it would just block off the screen, so they would be able to... It's just going to increase the number of times that they can visit and the number of visits that we can have at the same time. Video visitation, it also has lower rates for the family members. The tablets also have educational programs through their schoolhouse, and they are continuing to develop that. It's very customizable, so we can upload our own curriculum and content if we wanted to. We've already asked them to upload the books for AA and NA, and some of the religious materials that were constantly being asked for. We can also upload our own videos, so regardless of if it's an educational thing or if it's just an update, we'll be able to communicate a little bit more proactively with our population. Attorney visitations, right now, we're having to pull detainees downstairs, and of course, with the elevator situation, it's not the most efficient with our staffing. It's not the most efficient process. Using the tablets, they'll be able to visit with their attorneys. They can screen share, so if the attorneys have some discovery or some documents that they want them to review, they're able to do so. And in the future, they'll have the document signing ability, so in essence, it would hopefully reduce the amount of people that we're having to move up and down those elevators for the attorney visits. We can also do the screen share and the document signing, and we can do the document signing as, like, right now. That'll help with just more efficiency. Instead of us taking documents up for the detainee to sign, they can, we can just send it to them on the tablet, have them sign it, and send it back, and we're not having to move people up and down the facility or move our staff up and down the facility. And the tablets can also be used for phone calls, and one of the benefits to this is emergency calls. The previous setup was they used the phones on the walls to call into central control anytime they had some type of emergency. With the tablets, if they have one in their cell, it's going to increase their ability to call for help. As you can imagine, if somebody falls and they can't get up, getting access to help might be a problem. If they have a tablet in there, it might be easier for them to have that access. And the inmate telephones are 11 cents a minute, which is lower than what we were at before. And then with NCIC, we are also going to do the mail scanning. That's going to start as of November 1st. We've already posted notices within the pods. We'll post it on our website, Facebook, get the word out. We'll post it in all of the public areas, just to let people know that we'll have a new process in place. So if they want to send mail, then they're going to have to send it to this address, so it can be scanned in. so it can be scanned in, and it'll be delivered digitally. We hope that this will cut down significantly on the amount of contraband that is being brought in the facility. And that concludes my report. Do you have any questions, comments?
Questions or comments? I want to thank you very much, particularly Michelle Manietta, for taking the lead on using Indeed and the other platforms to recruit more people. We need more people.
Yes.
Everybody knows that. That's an understatement.
She's done an amazing job.
Congratulate her and thank her very much, as well as the rest of your staff making all these changes at the same time. And NCIC, thank you all for honoring your word on your contract. To my knowledge, until Jeff gives his report, you guys have done everything that is required, and we appreciate it. And soon, all of the detainees will appreciate it greatly, as well as their families. And programming, I can go on, and you know everything, you know the system. But thank you so much for stepping up and giving us a good contract at a good price and delivering the goods when they're supposed to be delivered. Thank you. Any other comments, Mrs.? All right. Thank you, Mrs. Garner. We appreciate your report.
Thank you.
Next, we have Financial Officer Chris Sherman. Today, you're starting your fifth week, I think. Congratulations, you have survived this far.
Well, yes, sir, at least so far. So I'm still here.
And we appreciate what you're doing.
Well, thank you. It's a good group to work with, and everybody's really working to try to make it the best facility we can with what we have. So we can go to the next slide. Can I get that? I'll get that bigger, because it's pretty hard to see.
Mr. Johnson, I notice you addressed Mrs. Campisi. I appreciate that. We're going to move the public session down till right after Jeff Alma's report this time, just so everybody knows, and then we'll pick up the schedule. I know everybody's on a busy schedule, but today was a little bit different. Thanks for your understanding.
Okay, so for our financial report, as far as this last month goes, or August goes, there was nothing markedly different from our previous month. We're still working on several different areas, and one of those is we've purchased, we were spending about $4,000 a month on styros, and the only reason we were is because they weren't bringing the trays back down from the floors. So we purchased, unfortunately, through our contract with Summit, we didn't have to pay for the trays. We have an allowance in that contract that will help us pay for kitchen equipment and things like that. So we're purchasing trays for three floors, and I think we have the trays in, but I don't think, we're not using them as of yet. But just in those ways, we've already started to cut down on the amount of a product we're using in areas that we don't need to be spending that kind of money. The other thing that I've discussed with CEO Garner is looking at our finances, we're in a position, so if you guys know the county, as long as it passes, I guess, B O C C, gave our employees, well, county employees, a two-and-a-half percent increase. We have identified enough funds to get our lieutenants and below an additional 5% increase, which is what I would recommend. And that's just lieutenants and below. Those are our boots on the ground. Those are the people we have to keep on staff that we've got to do something for them, and I think we're in a position right now with as many open positions as we've had over the year that this is something we can absolutely do, and it's not going to put, it's not going to put the trust in a financial, a bad financial situation whatsoever.
Is that it?
There, well, I mean, we're working on a couple of the things is, I've been working with Jeff, and we have got a solution for the fleet as far as tracking goes so that we can track all our vehicles, which we have not been doing. And the solution that we're using has, it uses all three major carriers, so it doesn't matter where in the state they go, we'll be able to track our vehicles wherever they go. Because it's also an officer safety issue. You know, if somebody gets off on the side of the road and says that the van stopped, and we can show that it never stopped, and they went from point A to point B, it's just, it's a safety issue for the inmates and the officers.
I reviewed Mr. C.'s report that we received at the end of the week, I believe, and DOC was late in their payment. Are they historically late in their payment?
Not all the time.
That's a weak excuse. I would like, I would like to make sure, and as a result, we're going to run $60,000 in the hole this month? That's correct?
Yes, sir.
According to the numbers that I saw. I think we need to have a letter sent to DOC to remind them.
Yes.
They're not allowed to fund their organization on the backs of the Oklahoma County taxpayers.
I will, I will make that happen in CC.
I just want to make sure that it goes to the right person.
I'll figure out who that is and make sure.
It's not right for other agencies to poach other agencies and balance their budget while we're in the hole. Granted, the $60,000 is not much, but $60,000 is $60,000 in our world.
For us, it's a lot of money.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Sherman?
I do.
Go ahead.
Last year, did our, and I already know the answer to this, but I still want you to reply. Last year, did our employees get a raise? Did the staff get a raise?
No, not last year.
Okay.
No, it was because I guess the one previous was the year before that, right after, right after the trust took over. Before you guys took over, the sheriff gave a $3,000 per person raise. I think that's what it was. I can't remember the exact number. I'll have to look at that and make sure. But I know that before the trust took over, the sheriff's office did give a raise, and then I think they had one more after that, and then they didn't have one last year. If I get the chronology correct on that, I'm not positive.
I think you're, I think you're right with that because there was one that came with, yeah.
Yeah.
Early '22.
I was thinking it was approved in '21, Carers Fund, but yeah.
Yeah.
I believe so. But I would commend you for finding that within your budget, and is that, that's 5% plus the two-and-a-half percent.
Yes, sir.
So it's a seven-and-a-half percent, and CPI is six something.
Six point three.
Yeah, so not only are we keeping up with inflation, you're actually going above and beyond a little bit, and I know it's very difficult, especially as we look at Highway Patrol, Oklahoma City, Dell City, everybody taking from our recruits to put onto their streets, and they're paying $70,000, and we're wondering why we can't keep people. I mean, it's pretty obvious. So thank you for doing everything again. Brandy, not enough can be said for the things that are, we're in your report and the things that you guys are doing, and thank you. As a commissioner, as a trustee, thank you.
Well, and we are looking at, we're going through all of our contracts, you know, even through our commissary and everything. We're reviewing everything to see if we can make more money in areas where we can save money and just make sure we're being good stewards of the tax dollars.
That's incredible.
Well, thank you for stepping out the problem with the cups, you know? That'll fund a lot of things in the future as it aggregates. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Sherman? And please follow up on the chronology of what actually happened. I know we're going to be playing catch-up, but at the next public meeting, let's know exactly what we're doing, assuming that the raises are approved today.
Just, Mr. Chairman, would you be willing to sign that along with the?
Sign what?
A letter to Department of Corrections?
Absolutely.
All right, so I think with Ms. Gardner and Mr. Alba signing that letter, if that doesn't grab their attention, not sure what will.
I believe it will. And on the raises, the two-and-a-half percent does not extend to administrative personnel. It's only, it's only everybody below.
Which is even better. I shouldn't say better. I mean, everybody deserves a raise in this crazy economy, but given where we are lacking individuals, we need to put that money where it's going to attract the best that we possibly can, maybe not be totally competitive with the other law enforcement agencies, but get a little bit closer, and that helps everybody.
Yes, sir.
And thank you. Thanks to the commissioners.
I would have one more comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Considering that we've had seven to eight percent inflation for the last two years, and I think it was six the year before, we're close to 20% increase in inflation. I appreciate getting this raise, but it's still not keeping up with inflation.
No.
And I know that none of the county employees are getting a raise equivalent to inflation, but we're way far behind on that.
Yes, we are.
The county is only receiving the two-and-a-half percent COLA, and quite honestly, all that's doing is keeping them from falling behind as fast.
Well, they're falling behind, but they did get, they got 7% last year.
No, he's never done anything that big.
I believe it was eight and a half.
Eight and a half.
From the county?
Yeah.
The county side? Okay, Cody says yes.
Yeah. We're behind, but.
We're getting better.
Eventually. I hope we can catch up.
We're working at it. We'll get there.
I hope the whole country can catch up, quite frankly, after this escapade. So, Mr. Sherman, thank you very much for your time. Mr. Alma, let's have your request, and then we go to public comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Just going to give a few quick updates on the network project, the Wi-Fi, the network infrastructure, mobile devices, and an update on what we're doing with the website. For network infrastructure and Wi-Fi, we had the UPS system, which that's our battery backup system, installed on the 25th. Network and server hardware installation is scheduled for the 23rd of this month. The hardwiring of the UPS, that'll happen next Friday, I believe, and we're expected to finish that sometime the week of the 30th through November the 3rd. Mobile devices, we're completing the configuration of the system on the device side and how those are going to work. The server side of the system is set up and ready to go. Once the application is fully configured, we'll start testing with those devices. Go-live and operations planning meetings are, we've kicked that off, and those are ongoing. System should be ready for go-live within two weeks of the completion of the network project, whatever day that is. We'll need roughly two weeks to turn out the devices. But everything is on track timeline-wise as far as that's concerned. Website, we're working on refreshing the website. We've upgraded the web server that hosts it. We're working on migrating the code base that'll allow us to display more modernized content, more imagery and stuff like that. We're about 20% complete with that, and we expect to be done around the 20th of this month. So just one more quick update on completion dates. Email, we're done with. Wi-Fi and network infrastructure, we expect to be done around Halloween. Mobile devices, we expect to be done around the 10th, and the website, we expect to be done the 20th of this month. That's it.
Are you still happy with the vendor?
Yeah.
Yeah. Just checking. I'm asking every month until this is done.
It should go well beyond the completion of the project.
Because I'm sitting right here.
Yeah, that's, that's just one vendor. I think I'm working with three or four altogether, top to bottom through this, but.
Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Real quick, which ones of these are actually paid for?
Mr. Washington, be quiet, please.
Say again.
Which ones of these projects are paid for through ARPA funds? I know that we approved, I believe it was the network.
Right.
Infrastructure.
That's all of that except the website, which the website's not costing us anything other than my staff members' time to reprogram the code.
Okay, so by 11:10 or so, you'll be completed with all of your ARPA-approved projects?
Yes, and as far as the email stuff goes, like, we're already being billed for some of it, so that's where we are.
This particular group, do they have a person here in town in case there's something come up?
Yeah, they've hired someone who's going to work onsite. They're going to work onsite dedicated to us.
Oh, that's important.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
The person they hired, he's, he's a holdover from the previous vendor, so he's already familiar with the facility. He's familiarizing himself with their system right now, but he should be ready to hit the ground running here in a few weeks.
Excellent news. That's great. Thank you for your report and the hard work that you and your team were doing.
Thank you.
By the way, Mrs. Campisi, we're going to go to the public side first before we hear from Mrs. Hanson. So first up this afternoon is Mr. Johnson. Excuse me, Johnston. Details matter.
So, good afternoon, everybody. I know that there's a lot of logistics and talking about this stuff, but I do find it a little bit problematic. We didn't talk about the recent death that just happened. That's a human being. It's not a file number. It's not a case number. It's a person who has a family. It's 44 dead in three years, and that's a stench that Lysol won't clean. So I want to say that, you know, again, because you guys know, I know him about my numbers, 77 dead under the sheriff's office for 19 years, 2000 to 2019. By 2026, we will have surpassed 77. That's according to the math. Math matters. You guys still won't check employees, all of them, or bring in reserve deputies to file in for the missing numbers so that when we get people that are ready to go, then we can file them out. For some reason, we just don't want to deal with the employee shortage like that, and there's no real realistic reason. So the citizens, we've been fighting back, so I want to give a public announcement that's going to be happening October 7th, 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. It's going to be at the National Women and Agricultural Association Sustainable Science Academy. It's off of 1701 North Dr. King Boulevard in Oklahoma City. Coalition of Civil Rights Organizations is convening a forum dedicated to promoting law enforcement accountability that includes you guys as well. The event will shine a spotlight on issues such as racial profiling, police violence, abuse of power, wrongful arrests, civil rights violations, and violations of the ADA Act. Experienced activists will be there hand-on-hand to provide support and guidance with Oklahomans who have faced police misconduct, stuff dealing with the jails, civil rights, and all of that stuff. All incidences will be documented and reported to the DOJ, the U.S. Civil Rights Division's Special Litigation Section of the Department of Justice. Representatives and agents from the United States Department of Justice will be there to take your stories, your evidence. If you don't have your evidence, it's okay. You can work with the People's Council for Justice Reform or the NAACP Oklahoma City Chapter. We will make sure to help you consolidate it, to get it to the federal government because these people are being investigated thoroughly. Confidential reporting areas will be accessible to ensure privacy and security. There will be no media, there will be coming in or anything like that, so you can be rest assured that you will be protected because we can't keep playing with their games. Obviously, if this would have been played with their games, it would have been done by now, would have been taken care of. So the feds are here. It's time we work together as a community to stand up, fight back, that they need to hear from you because we wait for these jokers to get things done. It's more lives. And again, they didn't talk about the recent death, so that shows you where their minds are at.
Good afternoon. Numbers on the board, but my son passed away 177 days ago in the county jail, so it's basically neglect because after he was put into the holding cell, no one checked on him, and he died within 30 to 45 minutes. So I'm just now finding out a lot of things that are coming forward, and I just wanted to let you guys know that I always travel from Atlanta. This time, I drove over 14 hours, so that lets you know that how serious I am about this situation. And I'm also requesting by Brandy that I can come and do a walkthrough of your facility. And if Tommy was here, I would be asking him also if I can go ahead and speak with the arresting officers on the night, and that's more of a personal mental thing because I'm having trouble sleeping, and I need to know exactly what happened because I've been doing my own investigation as his mother, and I also have three other sons that are bothered by this, and it's hard to explain to them what happened because we don't have full answers. And then all I keep getting is, we're waiting on the autopsy report. I'm not worried about the autopsy report at this time. I'm worried about the staff that was put in place to watch over these inmates that mysteriously keep passing on in the county, and it makes no sense. And it makes no sense. So it's like, we still need answers. It sounds good with all the preparation and the changes that they're doing, but I need to see for myself, because I've had people who have recently, since my son passed away on the eighth, that has been down at the county. And half of the stuff that they're talking about has not been changed. It has not been changed. And this is coming from people, family, friends, that's been in the county. So more so, like I said, it's just for me to have a clear mind of what happened. Because before you guys try to criticize me, learn from me, before I retired out, I had three licenses for Georgia, Texas, and Oklahoma as a caregiver. For twenty-some years, I took care of other people, family members, and I never let up. Nothing happened to them on my watch. And it's just confusing to me, how did this happen? I get it that they were understaffed, but that's not our problem. That's not our problem. It's not my dead child's problem. And it's sad, because he wasn't found until several hours later. And then the next day, or the day after, two more people died in the same week. That makes no sense. So obviously, the staff is not doing what they're supposed to do. Thank you.
Did you get your memorial folder and your bookmark of malady? Okay, I would like to know who delivered it to you. Okay, because what we found is. However, let me start with, like, she didn't mention the death that happened in the county jail, and you should be. How about the five overdoses in the same pod that wasn't mentioned? And how about Rovers refusing to give inmates toilet paper and telling them to take their effin' shirt and wipe their ass? That's disgusting. And, you know, when it comes to DOC, Brandy stood here one time, and she bragged, "I found a hundred and fifty DOC inmates waiting to pull chain. I got them out of there." Well, now, they blame DOC, and DOC blames Oklahoma County. So whose fault is it? Why are they not getting pulled? Why are they sitting there four months or longer waiting to go to DOC? And if DOC owes you money, all the more reason why they should be going to DOC. And as far as NCIC, and you're NCIC? Okay, I wanna let you know that your phone system, it keeps cutting off and dropping phone calls. But yet, we're charged for it, and we gotta pay for it. And there's nobody on the phone. You keep saying hello, hello, and then you gotta hang up, and the inmate has to call back. So that's not grand either. The phone system they had in there was okay. And what happened to the inmates getting free phone calls? You know, you got a lot of people in there that's indigent, that needs those free phone calls to call home. Do you smell something bad, Chad? Because you're making a face at me for some reason. But I'd like to know why the death wasn't mentioned and why the five overdoses wasn't mentioned. I had four inmates in my house that was in that very pod. And they told me about all the overdoses that happened in that pod. And one of them was an older lady, and it was the very first time she done drugs.
Thank you. Your time's up. Mr. Washington.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. To the speakers before me. Thank y'all very much for highlighting this hypocrisy that's being perpetrated in Oklahoma County Detention Center that I call House of Horror. Now then, Ms. Scott, my condolences to you and your son, your family. Please let Michael Washington know what he can do to help file a civil rights lawsuit on behalf of your son and family. I've been very instrumental in taking those previous steps with families before you, and I intend to continue to do so as long as I got breath in my body to do that. Now then, I don't know about any of you, but I know one thing is for certain. This must change. These murders.
Excuse me, if you're gonna have a conversation, please take it outside.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Washington.
These murders that we're constantly seeing, mothers and families waking up, not knowing the outcome of their child, their husband, their nephew, their niece, and so on. We must be more transparent. My organization, Oklahoma Coalition Against People Abuse, again, we wanted to thank the speakers spoke before me. We will be taking the steps necessary to ensure that this jail that's proposed to be built will not house eighteen hundred persons in. Why? Now, if you already got a shortage of staff already, what good does a larger jail do when you're gonna have more people now, gonna have less time to get to medical, hospital, food, or even out for recreation? No matter how you redo things, no matter how you straighten things out or rebuild, reconstruct, it's not gonna do any good. Oh, but Mr. NCIC, I just don't have time to get really, you know, get to rolling like I need to, darling. Now, Ms. Brandy Gardner, you stated that the inmate system, as far as visitation with their attorneys, would be done by the pass. Ma'am, that embraces unrealistic, and violates the privacy rights of the individual to visit their attorney. Now, I'm gonna be in a cell with my so-called inmate, and I'm forced to be in a cell. It's not his right to hear what I got to say to my attorney. I could be the most legitimate person, but that's me. So now you're gonna take away their attorney's client privilege, aren't you? Mr. District Attorney, you're sitting in the backseat, ma'am. Let me ask this, what is gonna happen to Mr. Tauri, who kicked a young man in the face while he was down? Mr. District Attorney, has there been a finalization on that yet? Oh, no, Michael, this is, it ain't justice anywhere. It's injustice everywhere. Mr. Tauri must be relieved of his duties, because he violated one of fundamental principles of a civilian that we expect from a high civil service. I, for one, we're not talking.
Spend your time's up. Thank you very much.
I'll be back.
We're gonna move on to Mrs. Hanson. Presentation on Turnkey and our health services. Mrs. Hanson, thank you.
Hello. My name is Donna Hanson. I'm a registered nurse. I hired on at Oklahoma County in November, so just about a year. So I'd like to talk to you a little bit about the process, current staffing, and where ultimately we'd like to be. So we have one Director of Nurses, one full-time physician that's onsite Monday through Thursday, one nurse practitioner that is there every day of the week, three psychiatric nurse practitioners, twenty-two LPNs, four RNs. We have fourteen med passers, three mental health therapists, one psychiatrist, medical director that's offsite, and various support staff. To continue that, we have a medical observation that has various levels of care with periodic health assessments, depending on your length of stay. Turnkey is really robust and growing. They have over a hundred and ten sites, I believe, right now. Other jails that they provide medical, mental health, and dental services to. So when somebody comes into the facility, they go to our intake area. They're seen by medical staff, an EMT, and a nurse. They go through an extensive questionnaire. They get consent sign, vital signs taken. And based on their medical history, it kinda depends how long their intake process is gonna be in the medical unit. If they're deemed healthy enough to come into jail, they go on to the next step as far as getting a bed goes. If they're not fit for incarceration, they go out to the emergency room and get the necessary testing that they need and medical treatment started, because we don't want it to delay care. For example, if somebody comes in on a Thursday and they need some kind of medical care or dialysis, we make every effort to get them out to their dialysis or the medical care started, because our physician isn't gonna be there until Monday or Tuesday. We don't want it to delay that care. We want them taken care of right away. So the patient is interviewed by classification after that and assigned a bed, and it's kind of based on their classification, their criminal history, their current crime, and any medical, mental health needs that they may have would affect their housing location. Generally, they get a bed really quick after they've been medically accepted into the jail, within a few hours, so that's really good. So once you're housed in jail, we provide access to care, which means in a timely manner that they can notify medical for any needs that they may have. It's a standard that all inmates get access to care, so they can order care by, or sick call, see the nurse by kiosk. They can tell the officer. They can tell one of the nurses that go in the unit. I think we probably have four or five nurses that go into each pod every day. So whether it's med pass, sick call, finger sticks, detox, we have somebody going into the unit all the time. We have a medical unit, which provides a enhanced level of care. Maybe somebody who's a little older can't achieve their ADLs, or they have a trach, or dialysis, or they're paraplegic. We're there then to help them get through their day. I have licensed staff that's there twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. To get into the medical unit, the old terminology is called the infirmary. I prefer not to hang any IV bags or anything like that. We prefer to send them out to the ER, where they can get appropriate labs in conjunction with any fluids that they may need. Same with mental health. If you're currently suicidal, we're gonna put you on what we call SP one, or suicide precautions. And there, we have a one-to-one, and somebody's actually physically looking in at you every fifteen minutes and documenting what you're doing, if you're actively suicidal, or we believe that you are actively suicidal, homicidal, or gravely disabled. So we also have an OB-GYN coming in, Dr. Hamid. He is very well-known throughout the state and the DOC. He comes in once a week and takes care of all our pregnant women, because essentially, they're all high-risk pregnancies. Generally, up until about thirty-two weeks gestation, they're housed in regular population, and we monitor them weekly with ultrasounds and fetal heart tones to make sure mother and baby are doing well. Once they surpass the thirty-two weeks, they get housed medically, close by, so we can more monitor them and schedule the induction of labor or the cesarean, whatever they need. We also have a portable birthing kit, in case all of a sudden they go into labor and they can't wait. We provide a community standard of care, which means basically, if you have cardiac issues, we're gonna send you out to that cardiologist or an associate. If you need dialysis, we're gonna send you to the VITA or doctor's choice to get your dialysis, or their associate. So onsite and offsite, we provide dialysis, oncology, ortho, ENT, high-risk pregnancy ultrasound. We go to Dean McGee. We do DOC over at OU. We provide cardiac services, radiology, MRI, CAT scans. Onsite, we have a dental opatory, ultrasound, X-ray, wound care. We have full-time wound care nurse and OB-GYN, plus our normal services of just general practitioners. We also do periodic health assessment. So other than the robust intake screen that you get when you come in, we schedule anniversaries for physicals to keep up on your health. When you see our providers, you usually get a full lab panel, and we go from there and treat you accordingly. Do you have any questions?
Any questions, comments for Mrs. Hanson? Let me ask, on the new backbone, Jeff, is, are they involved in utilizing our network?
They will be.
They will be? You're smiling. Why are you smiling? Is that a question that we needed to be asked, or?
No, we just met about this last week.
Oh, okay, okay, that's fine. I just wanna make sure there's some coordination, that you don't have to do your own, that you're connected. I assume that information on the tablet, that everybody will have access to once it goes live, correct? And that's all the medical information? That's permissible?
Right, well, we have HIPAA.
Correct.
We do have guidelines.
All right. Anybody else have anything? No? Thank you, Mrs. Hanson. Appreciate your time. Next is Speaker Steele with the Citizens Advisory Board. Oh, I guess Speaker Steele.
Speaker Steele looks a little different today. I ran him off.
I saw him right there. I saw him.
You're good. You're good. No, I'm Erin Engelke. I'm the Vice Chair of the Citizens Advisory Board, and always a pleasure to be with you all. Hopefully, I'll be able to keep my comments relatively brief. We have some exciting developments, particularly coming out of the Community Relationships Subcommittee. As you may recall, we've been working for some time behind the scenes on a community survey to assess a number of topics surrounding public perception, information that the community receives from the detention center. I have actually a copy of that survey. I'd like to. This survey was discussed in additional detail at our subcommittee meeting, which met this week. As you'll see, we are wanting to get as confidential and unbiased information as possible. We will capture some demographic information, including age, that's optional, what city they live in within Oklahoma County, also optional, and then email optional. Beyond that, we're wanting to garner some questions, some feedback and insights around general awareness about the Oklahoma County Detention Center and their overall perception. We want to gauge communication and transparency, so how do they currently get information about the detention center? How would they assess the transparency and communication between the detention center and the community? Would they be interested in periodic updates from the detention center about activities, policies, and changes? We're asking if the community would like to have more input in decision-making processes, and asking if they would like to attend community meetings or forums held by the detention center, if given the opportunity. In addition, we are wanting input around community safety and security, asking if they believe that the detention center treats detainees fairly and respectfully. How effectively do they think the detention center ensures the safety and security of Oklahoma County? And then how effectively do they think the detention center ensures safety and security of staff and/or detainees? In addition, we're asking about personal experience and reentry, so asking if they or a loved one have ever been detained inside the detention center. What challenges or obstacles have they faced when trying to obtain information from the detention center or engaged with them? And then how would they assess the detention center's efforts in rehabilitating detainees and preparing them for reentry into the community? And then our final question is, if you could suggest one major change to the detention center, what would it be, and leaving that open-ended? We've taken a lot of time to pour into this survey. Our intent is to begin distributing this in the coming weeks. But before we do that, we do have a request of the trust, specifically in the form of dollars. We would like some support to be able to develop survey tools that are. that are completely distanced from our advisory board and subcommittee, just to ensure that there's respect and trust with the community in terms of the distribution of this survey. In addition, in the first quarter of 2024, it's our intent to host listening sessions across a number of areas of the community to sit down and hear from the community in person. And with that, we would like to request a maximum of $1,000 for us to conduct 10 sessions to just essentially support communication in advance of those listening sessions, some refreshments, and just incidentals that may come up as we conduct those very, very important listening sessions. You will be receiving a formal email with all of these requests from Hannah Royce, who is the chair of the Community Relationships Subcommittee. I'm going to pause there for just a moment. Any questions on this survey? I have a couple of other updates, but...
No comments. Go ahead.
Okay, great. You are aware that we regularly enter into the detention center and conduct focus groups with the men and the women detained there, and we do have another, tentatively, I think we're still waiting on confirmation, but tentatively scheduled for this Thursday at 2:15. Our three Citizens Advisory Board members, Leslina Smith, Ray Douglas, and Chris Steele, will be attending that focus group. We would love to open it up to the trust members. If you are interested in participating in this, this month's focus group, please notify Chris Steele or myself, and we'll be happy to facilitate that for you. All right. In closing, our next Citizens Advisory Board meeting is next Wednesday, October the 11th at 9:30. That's all I have for you. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions?
I have a question.
There you go.
With the next focus group, do you, is it men at, if I missed any of this, I apologize. I was looking at the data on the survey as well. Is for you to identify whether it be men and women, or just men or women, and how many we should be expecting to be in part of that focus group?
Mm-hmm. Good questions. Anytime we conduct the focus groups, it is both men and women. And to be perfectly honest, sometimes we don't know how many will choose to participate. It kind of just depends on the circumstances of the day. But in my experience, typically, it's a fairly small group. The men, there might be five to six men, and the women could be just like two to three. But again, it just depends, but a smaller group.
How are those chosen or housed that often? Do you know as far as who knows whether or not they can participate, or whether they should participate? How does that work?
We enter the pod, and depending upon who is already out of their pod or who is interested in participating, it's basically presented to anybody that is currently there, and they have the option to participate. We've never had anybody turn us down. They are really hungry to be, have, have the ability for their voices to be heard.
I just say I very much appreciate your feedback because you have people that are in there. You're in there. The trust is not in there.
Yeah.
You're talking to them, and we hear in the media, and sometimes in this room, about something, one person said, an allegation, one person made. But I've been reading through all the data you present at this meeting of the actual people that you're talking to that are in there, in much larger quantities of sample size of numbers, and we're hearing two different data, and I appreciate the work you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions?
Thank you for your report.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Give our best to the speaker. Next is item eight, discussion of possible action to implement the memorandums that the county graciously gave to all employees. Mr. Sherman, again, you mentioned this earlier in your remarks.
Yes, so, we, the proposal would be to do the two and a half percent for the clerks, all employees, save administration, and then we, we'd be able to do an additional 5% for lieutenants and below for the DOs.
That, that's not a part of this motion, but when we ask for a motion, I would hope that it would be included. That's the language that you need, correct? What council recommended? Okay. Rod, do you have any comments on that?
I'd asked Erin about it, and she said she felt that the, the agenda item was enough.
Was enough. It only mentions the two and a half percent.
And the two and a half percent is all that's before you.
But it's as a minimum.
But it may very well be a minimum, but it's also all that's before.
Well, let's just add the language so we're clear that we're doing two buckets. Does that make sense? Anything else you want to say about that?
No, I just, like I said, I'd, I'd asked Erin, and Erin, because I said, do we need to add the five percent?
I think we understand.
And she just said, no, I think we're good.
I think we understand.
I'll make a motion.
Any questions first?
No.
Any questions of Mr. Sherman on this, the two and a half or the 5%? Feel like I'm an auctioneer right now. Okay, thank you very much. We'll entertain a motion to accept the two and a half percent graciously from the county, as well as the 5%, which excludes administrative staff and takes care of lieutenants and below in detention officers.
And admin is also not included in the two.
Correct, correct, correct.
So moved.
So moved. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Thank you very much. We have a motion for the two and a half percent from the county and additional 5% for lieutenants and below. Thank you very much. No staff, no administrative staff, correct? So, let's take a vote on the motion, please. Vote electronically, and Mrs. Campisi, please call the roll, please. Yes?
Aye.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank all of you for that, and thank you for your hard work, especially Chris and Mrs. Garner on finding the 5%. We trust when you say it won't cause a problem, it won't cause a problem. Okay, that's what I need to know. Added assurance, it'll go to item nine now. Counselor, you want to talk about these two items that are back-to-back? Item nine and item 10 are approval of contracts for legal work. That's my abbreviated version.
These two contracts arise in two federal court lawsuits that are pending against the trust and the Board of County Commissioners, but we are unable to defend the employee that's involved. And as employer, you have an obvious statutory duty to defend your employee, but we, as the District Attorney's Office, cannot do it. So, you need outside counsel for this role in this particular instance, in these two cases.
Any questions? Again, Counselor, do we, I appreciate that. Counselor, should we have two votes on this, or can we pass them both at the same time?
You can do both at the same time.
Thank you very much. So, we're considering item nine and item 10. We have a motion on the floor to approve both legal contracts for representation, and we have a second. Please vote electronically, and Mrs. Campisi, please call the roll. Yes, Mr. Johnson. Is that correct? I did hear you. Thank you. Yes?
Yes.
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 Thank all of you. We go to item 11 now, which is a discussion of a memorandum of understanding that Board of County Commissioners, on behalf of the Oklahoma County Sheriff, to provide transportation services to the detention center. Mrs. Garner, your comments?
So, the MOU is basically something that we have had in place, it's my understanding, since the beginning of the inception of the trust. It basically provides for the transportation of the detainees from our facility to the courthouse and back, and there have been some minor modifications made to this MOU, just with respect to what their responsibility is and what our responsibility is, but there is a financial component attached to it.
And you, the sheriff, and Mr. Anderson are in agreement of what's before us, correct?
We are.
I feel a little uneasy moving forward with this, since he's absent from the scene. But any comments or questions for Mrs. Garner?
You know it. I do. My reading, my reading of the indenture is that the trust does not have responsibility for transportation between the jail and the courthouse. And then, section seven reads, "We also don't have any jurisdiction or responsibility for the holding facilities at the courthouse." And it reads that specifically accepted and not a part of the purposes of this authority, which is the trust, are the following: A, the Oklahoma County Courthouse holding detention facilities, and the Oklahoma County Juvenile Justice Center. Also accepted, the detention of any inmate or person held in Oklahoma County Courthouse holding facilities, and Oklahoma County Juvenile Justice holding facilities, who are subject to a temporary confinement order of a judge of the district court. And also accepted are the security of Oklahoma County Courthouse or Oklahoma County Juvenile Justice Center for the judges and staff and the public. My understanding is C is the only part that's not in this memorandum of understanding. But then, number D or section D, also accepted the implementation, operations, and transportation of any inmates or others in custody or in temporary confinement to and from Oklahoma County Courthouse or Oklahoma County Juvenile Justice Center. And then, regarding the trust estate, which is what we have jurisdiction over also, the trust estate under no circumstances shall consist or be deemed to consist of the Oklahoma County Courthouse or its holding detention facilities. In my reading of the memorandum of understanding, contrary to the indenture, we're taking responsibility. In fact, we're paying for it. We're paying, we would be paying a pretty high fee. It adds up to $81,000 per employee for the transportation, and $69,000 a year for the employees for holding at the, at the courthouse detention facilities. And I don't understand why, when we've been accepted from this responsibility, we would be taking it on. Do we have to amend the indenture before we do this? And I also recognize that we've been paying the sheriff for transportation since the beginning of the trust. I don't know how that happened. I'm partly responsible because I've been approving the budget each, every year. Didn't actually get to read the budget or invoices until recently, but I don't think we have a responsibility for that. And there's also, in the sheriff's handbook, the specific responsibility for transport. And also, there's even more transport responsibilities, even when there's a trust involved, than just what this memorandum of understanding is covering, but which we've been covering on our own, which would be the sheriff's responsibility. So, I would, I would move that we terminate the existing MOU and do not sign a new MOU. And I recognize the sheriff needs funds for this, but it should not be using the trust as a conduit for those funds. They come from the county, and some of those could even come from the state, under the sheriff's handbook that I read. There are quite a few of the transportation responsibilities he has that would be billed to the state. But I don't, my, I move that we do not, that we terminate the existing MOU and do not enter into the new MOU that's been proposed. Otherwise, we'll be in, we'll be contrary to the indenture.
Would you allow a question?
Yeah.
Counselor, do you have any comment to make on what Arnold is referring to in the indenture? None? I'm trying to figure out who's right, wrong, and indifferent. But again, without a full compliment of eight trustees, I'm a little nervous moving forward with this. I think everybody ought to be present. This is a big item. You know, it's almost three-quarters of a million dollars.
It's over three-quarters of a million.
It's over three-quarters.
Especially as the, the sheriff is a member of the trust, not able to be here, this obviously regards to the budget. I, I would prefer to table this until at least we've had some communication with the sheriff about this item.
I agree with the communication, but I actually think he has a conflict and should not vote on this matter, that he would be, if he were considering this on the trust, he would be acting with the sheriff's hat. And so, he could not speak as a member of the trust because of the conflict.
We have a motion to the table. Is there a second? We also have a motion on the floor. Ms. Arnold, is there a second?
Well, you got a second for your table, so.
Where? Oh, Mr. Johnson, I didn't hear you. Thank you very much. So, there's a motion to table which precedes, and we will vote electronically. Motion to table. We'll proceed and we'll vote. Please call the roll, Mrs. Campisi. Motion to table, yes.
Yes.
My second, no ever, but no.
It's understood. Yes. All right. We will table this till our next meeting, which happens to be item number 13, I think. No, that's not true. It is item 13. We're going to have a meeting on Monday, November 6th, but we, next item. Thank you, Mrs. Garner. Next item is a presentation from the Mental Health Department, I believe. Is that correct? I'm sorry. Please introduce yourself. You're not on the agenda for some reason.
Good afternoon. I'm Nisha Wilson. I'm the chief clinical officer for the Oklahoma Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services.
Thank you very much. Proceed.
Yes, so, a few months back, we actually hired and placed a full-time licensed clinician within the jail and through great partnership with CEO Gardner, and that has been really great. We've identified a couple of priority populations that that full-time therapist serves in the jail. Some of those are our treat-to-competency population, and then also, he's doing some work with the wonderful program that we partnered with Judge Bondurant on, the co-op program. And one of the areas that I think we've all identified are just the facility challenges and being able to maneuver staff so that they can provide services and programming to individuals. And so, one of the barriers that has been identified is the ability for a detention officer to be able to escort our full-time licensed clinician in the jail so that we can make the most use of his time, and he can serve as many individuals as he can possibly see in his 40-hour work week. And so, what we would like to offer, as the Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services, is a contract with the jail trust to fund the full salary and benefits of a full-time detention officer that would be able to escort our staff to provide these services throughout the jail. And then, at any point in time, if that officer is not needed, that officer could, would certainly be free to be used in whatever means necessary and to cover services within the detention center. But we would certainly ask that that person, their priority role and their work really be focused on assisting our full-time licensed staff in the jail and providing services to that population in the jail.
Mrs. Garner, anything you would want to add to that? Is there a contract existing or an MOU already in place, or is that coming forward soon?
So, I think our, our discussion today, excuse me, our discussion today was to ask the trust to approve that contract so that we could get one started and it be signed.
I think we need to see the contract before we approve it.
Yes, absolutely. So, my understanding is that it was supposed to be on the agenda. I'm not sure what happened to the attachment, but I'll track it down and I'll...
Please do. It was not in the documents that happened to go out.
I'll send it out.
So, we appreciate the offer deeply. We need all the help we can get, as you've heard today several times over. Any other comments or questions that you might have?
Yeah, I'm sorry for the confusion. It's very rare for us to have someone offer a contract to help us. We will, we will look at it when we can, but we can't vote on a contract we have not seen.
I, I would add that what, if you all are okay with it, we can go ahead and get it started on our end and then have everything prepared and ready so that when you all are... so that when you all are able to sign it, we'll be able to move on the execution of the contract.
Mr. Alexander says, "We're not turning help away."
Good deal, all right. Thank you very much.
I was not in that position, Ms. Arnold.
Please give my thanks to the whole Department of Mental Health. I sincerely appreciate this. You saw a need and you came. I appreciate it.
Thank you for that.
We appreciate the offer deeply.
We appreciate the partnership. Thank you.
Great. Maybe we can double up on the number in the contract negotiations.
Well, I mean, quite frankly, Mr. Chairman, we can authorize you to sign it on behalf.
Not gonna do it, wouldn't be prudent. No, thank you for the offer. I appreciate that. I'm sorry. You have any other comments you want to make? But we appreciate it.
No, sir.
Great. Thank you for your time. Funny guy, okay. As I mentioned, item 13 is the regularly scheduled meeting on November 6th. Unless it's otherwise scheduled, we go on to any comments before we take a motion moving into executive session? Any comments for the good of the order? Any questions?
Just real quick, Mr. Chairman, I don't believe anybody here has seen it yet, but the Board of County Commissioners selected a site this morning. It is the westernmost site for the airport. It's, if you've seen the sites, it's actually site number 10. It is the best location, farthest away from schools, and it's in a spot that already has four federal holding facilities there anyway. We got the FTC.
You have an address?
I don't. Do you want an address?
I do, you have it to help me.
There you go.
6100 Newcastle Road. Thank you. Congratulations on that. That's, at least we have a site.
We have a site.
How many acres do we have?
192.
That's a start. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I know he's grateful. People will quit asking me where the new jail's going to be. Have no involvement in making that decision.
And you can blast it out on the radio now.
All right. No other comments? Ms. Arnold, Mr. Johnson, anything?
I appreciate the commissioners for doing this. I truly do. I know that you take a lot of heat and I appreciate it. No matter where you choose.
This will not be a vertical building properly?
That is our goal.
That's a goal, okay. Let's move on. Now, we have three items that are needed for executive, executive session in accordance with the Open Meeting Act, Title 25 OS 311A9. I'd entertain a motion to cease regular business and move into executive session. Requires a second. I have a motion. Is there a second? All right, let us vote on the motion to move into executive session. Please vote electronically. Ms. Campisi? Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you very much.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're returning from executive session. I need to have a motion. So moved and seconded, I hope, to return to executive from executive session. Second, let's induct the vote. Mrs. Campisi call the roll. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And that was item, item number 15, I believe. I'm losing track of this. Well, that was 17 entering seven sixteen. Yes, that's correct. Seventeen returned and seventeen seventeen was stricken, I believe, if that's correct, sir. On eighteen, we have, I need a motion to table number eighteen and we're going to accept the report on number nineteen. So I have a motion and a second to table eighteen.
Motion.
Second, thank you very much. This is Campisi. Call the roll and vote electronically, please.
Who sec? I moved it.
Yeah.
Second, he did.
I hit my button. Yes, I seconded.
Yeah. Yeah.
Gotcha.
Yeah, motion's right. Yes.
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 I take that that completes our agenda. Anybody have any last closing comments before I ask for an adjournment?
If we have any missing trustees, the next meeting, can we remove trustee Johnson over to the rest of us so we don't look anti-social?
That's a point well taken. Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second? No objection? Really? I think we're gonna take a vote on this. So we're consistent. Yes, sorry. Please call the roll, Mrs. Campisi. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.